Good evening and welcome to the school board meeting for District 196. It is Monday, December 13th. Would you rise and join us with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, excuse me, I meant to have you stand for a moment of silence. We're standing in a moment of silence this evening for Ava Gardner, a senior at Eastview Our thoughts and prayers are with Ava's 196 family and her friends. Good evening. We'll start out with the approval of the agenda this evening. Board, there's one update on the personnel exhibit, so it's revised with an update to the personnel exhibit. So with that, I will ask for a motion in a second to approve the agenda as revised.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Craig, a second by Corey. All in favor of the agenda as revised, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, that passes on a seven-zero vote. Tonight, we have a lot of recognition. If you've watched our school board meetings, you know that we love recognitions and love being able to celebrate with our students. Tonight, our first recognition is for a perfect ACT score. We'll call up Drew Mons from Apple Valley High School, and he will introduce us to Bryson And no, Mike Rosin, you can't tell us that you had a perfect ACT score.
I was gonna say, that sounded pretty good for me for a second there. Superintendent Krieger, Chair Magnuson, members of the board, District 196 community, it is my pleasure tonight to introduce you folks to Bryson Flake. Bryson is a student at Apple Valley High School. We know that our schools, they take tremendous pride in the accomplishments of our students when it comes to the ACT. Our schools routinely score higher than the national average and also over the state average, which is no small deal considering how strong education is here in the state of Minnesota. Every year, about 1.7 million students take the ACT. Bryson was amongst many students here in District 196 that took the ACT. Understandably, considering what education has looked like for the last two years and lack of testing opportunities and some of those things, we saw a decade-low average score of ACTs across the nation here this last year. Bryson did his part to raise that average. Bryson scored a perfect score of a 36 on the ACT. That accomplishment puts him, just for kind of note on that, fewer than 1 percent, I'm sorry, half of 1 percent of students across the nation, score a perfect score on the ACT. So it's really just an absolutely incredible, incredible accomplishment on his part here. Bryson is joined with us here tonight with his parents, Maury and Lisa, and his sister, Ashley, who are over this way. Give a wave there. Notable to remark in there that I found out here this evening that his sister, Ashley, will be finishing up her student teaching here later here this year, so for my colleagues from Rosemount and from Eagan and Eastview and SES, we get first dibs. But tonight, you know, just thinking a lot, and I'm gonna actually talk to our juniors here tomorrow about the ACT, and I'll remind the students as they begin prepping for it here this year, that the ACT is just a snapshot. It's an important snapshot, but it's not something that defines you. And when I think even for Bryson, it's just really important to note on that because his scores are incredible, but just even important to note there that when he was recognized on this, his first indication was to say he was grateful for the many teachers, counselors, administrators, and mentors that have helped to prepare him along the way. Bryson really is, he epitomizes what we say to be hungry and humble and smart. So it is my pleasure here, oh, I forgot one other thing. You're gonna see Bryson again, 'cause I have had two students before that had a perfect score on the ACT, but I've never had this. Bryson just received word here this last week that he also had a perfect score on the PSAT, which is gonna put him in running for National Merit Scholars here as well. So a first time in my career for that, an incredible accomplishment, incredible young man, who we're very proud to have at Apple Valley High School. I present to you Bryson Flake.
Woo! Congratulations. Thank you for coming. All congratulations. Thank you so much. Congratulations, Bryson. Congratulations, Mom and Dad. Congratulations, everybody that had a hand in your education. We look forward to seeing you again, Bryson. Next up on recognitions this evening is the adapted soccer state runner-up, the CI Dakota United, Brent Kozelski will present our team of athletes.
Good evening, Superintendent Krieger, Chairperson Magnuson, and the school board. My name is Brett Kozelski, and I'm the head coach of the adapted athletics program for the Dakota United Hawks soccer team. I want to thank you for having us here to be recognized for our accomplishments this past season, capturing our second-place finish in the state tournament last month. The Dakota United Hawks had an amazing season that featured many highlights. We have a program that features a varsity and a junior varsity that has 36 participants in it. Other districts struggle to put together even a varsity roster alone, and it's because of your guys' support that we're able to do what we're able to do. I would like to thank the school board and our number-one supporter, Mary Krieger, for all the support that she gives us over these years. I'd like to thank our athletic director, Matt Percival, for the tireless energy that he puts into our program at the athletic director level. I'd like to thank my assistant coach, Scott Coonsey, for being my right-hand man every season of the school year. The past two years have been difficult for adapted sports. As many of you know, I must give credit to these kids for coming out the last 20 months without a full season. We were not able to compete against other teams in state tournaments, but there was no competitive games or state tournaments that allowed us to compete at the highest level. They all came out for the practice seasons the last 20 months to be together, to work for a common goal, and to achieve greatness. This year, it showed. I want to give credit to our seniors last year, who were not able to compete in their last year of high school eligibility, but they came out to every practice helping this squad be what they are now. They came out to practices each and every day, knowing that their efforts would ensure that our program would stay strong, and they made each one of these kids better each and every day in the long run. We may not have been able to hang banners in the rafters over the past couple of years, but the lessons learned from showing up for a different cause was much more important than any trophy could ever be. Last year's team built a bond during a time that there was nothing to win on the court, and they were the reason that we had so much success this year. I'd like to introduce each of these students, one by one. Thomas.
Kyle.
Mark.
Miles.
Natalie.
Henry.
Hunter.
Andrew.
And assistant coach, Scott Coonsey. Thank you.
Wow, thank you! Thank you, guys. Thank you! Good job! Look at that! Very nice. Thank you for coming tonight. Congratulations! Woo, thank you, thank you, thank you! Congratulations to CI Dakota United. Next up is the adapted soccer state runner-up, the PI Dakota United, with Lori Buckslar. And she is going to introduce our athletes. Oh, good, you brought your trophy too!
Good evening, Chairperson Magnuson, school board members, and Superintendent Krieger. Thank you for inviting us this evening. My name is Lori Buckslar, and I'm the head coach of the Minnesota State High School League, PI Adapted Soccer State Runners Up, the Dakota United Hawks. Before I introduce my team, I'd love to introduce my assistant coaches first. We have Steve Eggleston and Paul Stokke, and Jacob Moss was unable to be with us this evening. As every coach knows, a team and a head coach is only as good as those that are by your side. And for that, I'd love to thank Steve and Paul and Jacob for being the best coaches and support that I could ask for. I'd also love to give a shout-out to the parents of our players. They sacrifice for and support our team and us as coaches. We couldn't be who we are without the parents. I'd also love to do another shout-out for our great athletic director, Matt Percival. He's ever-so-helpful, supportive, and he answers emails and texts faster than just about anyone I know. That's a great thing for a coach. And now for our team, beginning with our captains, our three captains, all of whom were awarded the All-Tournament Team. We're gonna start with our captain Fiona Sitzman. She's a junior at Eagan High School. She was kind of our all-around player. She scored a ton of goals. She played usually a forward, but she also played as a goalie for us. Next to her is Alex Storgensen. He played on defense, and he knocked down every ball that was within any range. In fact, he'd go after it, knock into people. It was always quite fun to watch Alex. Sam Gertner was unable to be with us this evening, but he's a senior at Rosemount High School, and he was also part of our All-Tournament Team. The rest of our players, we have, next to them, we have Chloe Shibata. Give a little wave, Chloe. Eighth grader, Scott Highlands. Then, Eagan High School freshman, Dominic Albus. Eagan High School freshman, Livia Grossbauer. Rosemount High School freshman, Reese Martin. Sophomore from Rosemount High School, Amisha Etter. We have Rohan Deshpande. He is a junior at Eagan High School. And following that, we have Kevin Cruz Sanchez, a senior from Rosemount High School. If you look at our statistics for our season, we are 6-0 regular season record and 7-1 is our final at the end of the tournament. With a total of 58 goals scored this year, you'll see a successful season with a talented team, but what you don't see and what you may not know is at the beginning of this season, we didn't know if we were gonna have enough players. A lot of those schools in the whole state of Minnesota struggled to put together adapted soccer teams, and we were one of them. We didn't know. But here we are, we came up with 10 players that were outstanding for us. Another thing you might not know is that of our 10 players, four had never played on an organized team before. Some hadn't played soccer before. You might not even realize that one of our players is new to the United States and only speaks Spanish, and I don't. And Steve doesn't. But thank you to Rosemount High School Spanish teacher, Tanya Zaragami, for helping pave the way for us a little bit and also Google Translate on Steve's phone. Did a lot for us. We had a successful season, but most of all, we had a group of 10 kind, respected, respectful, hard-working players that fell into the perfect rhythm of passing, or playing together and passing the ball. It didn't matter to them who scored. They just passed the ball to the best of their ability, and it worked. We have coached some outstanding teams with extremely talented players before, but we've never had a team that has passed as well as this group of kids. Our very first game, the two officials talked to both Steve and I on the side and said, "Oh, my gosh, your players are passing phenomenally." So that was awesome, considering, again, four kids hadn't played on an organized team before. But you know that passing, it's a mark of a great soccer player, but it's also the mark of a kind and selfless athlete, selfless, not selfish, and human beings. It didn't matter that we lost 7-5 in the state tournament game. Well, it did. But in the big picture, this was as successful of a year as a coach could ask for, and we were very proud and blessed to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Coach. Thank you, guys, for coming tonight. Thank you, guys, for coming. We'll see you next year. Congratulations, and thank you to the PI Dakota United Hawks for coming this evening. Congratulations. Our next recognition tonight is the Class AAA State Runner-Up, Rosemount High School Boys Soccer. Todd Farrington is going to introduce our athletes.
Good evening, Chairperson Magnuson, Superintendent Krieger, members of the school board. Thank you for taking time to recognize this amazing group of young men. It is a real privilege for me to be here in front of you and in front of all of you tonight. I also want to say thank you for the time, effort, and courage you all show in leading this district and providing amazing opportunities for the students, teachers, and parents of the children in this community. Thank you. Coming into this fall season, there was a lot of excitement and high expectations for some of the athletic programs at Rosemount High School. We were not one of those programs. Sat down with our captains before the season, and we set some realistic goals for ourselves to maybe finish 500, maybe win a section playoff game. The Rosemount Boys Soccer Program has made it to the state tournament only twice in its history.
Oh, my gosh.
And this year, we started the season well. We were playing some really good soccer, but weren't not getting the results we wanted. And we came up with the phrase, "What's next?" All right, what are we gonna do about this? And we finished the regular season with four wins, six losses, and three ties. As our trainer, athletic trainer Riley, told me after our state semifinal game, "We ended up winning more games in the postseason than we did all regular season." I believe that every one of these young men would agree that our greatest accomplishment this year, however, and the strength of this team, was its unity. These young men established a great connection and a deep trust for each other. Not only will they carry the memories of playing at US Bank Stadium with them, but they will never forget the power of teamwork, trust, and compassion that they shared all fall. I am truly grateful for my role as a teacher at Rosemount High School and as a coach, thankful to my principal, Mr. Pete Rollback, for giving me this opportunity. I consider it a great privilege to work with this group of young men right here. I would like to introduce them to you now. Senior goaltender, Leighton Simmering. Senior goaltender, Alex Flohr. Sophomore goalie, Eli Lewis. Senior captain, Isaac Lewis. Junior captain, Reed Wolf. Junior Finn Nicholson. Senior Brady Fawning. Senior Johan Phillips. Senior Croy Westbrock. Junior Logan Anderson. Senior Trevor Sladweiler. Eighth grader, Ethan Brown. Junior Andres Delgado. Senior Evan Sickman. Our team manager, Kenny Cheetah. And I was very fortunate this year to work with an outstanding coaching staff. Mike Flourish. Pete Feig. Jim Lindell. Lacey Nelson. Scott McDonald. And Coach Ricky Santy. Finally, I'd like to recognize and express my gratitude for our parents. These young men that you see up here are men of great character, and that has everything to do with the amazing parents we have. They have been great encouragers for our athletes and great supporters of this program. So, parents, thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you so much. No, thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you so much, Coach. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Congratulations. Thank you so much for coming tonight. Thank you, Coach. Congratulations, Rosemount High School Soccer. We are so gonna steal that line. As board members and as district learning leaders, I think we're gonna steal that line. What's next? Thank you for the recognitions this evening, and it's so much fun to celebrate with students, staff, and the parents. Thank you so much. We'll move on to the superintendent's recognition of students and staff.
Okay, I just have a couple of updates. A very big congratulations to the Rosemount High School marching band on being selected to perform in the Tournament of Roses Parade in Pasadena, California on January 2nd, 2023. This will be Rosemount's second time performing in the Rose Parade. The first was in 2014. Out of nearly 300 applicants this year, Rosemount was one of only six high school bands selected to perform in the 134th Rose Parade. The band was informed of the honor late last month. Tournament of Roses president, Amy Waynescott, is expected to visit Rosemount High next summer to personally extend the performance invitation. The annual Rose Parade draws about 700,000 spectators in person and is viewed by more than 300 million people in more than 200 countries. We will certainly be watching with great pride that day for all the hard work it will have taken to get there. And lastly, I want to congratulate Eastview High School junior Namisha Bora on finishing second in the Congressional App Challenge in Minnesota's 2nd Congressional District, the annual nationwide competitionist for middle school and high school students interested in computer science. Namisha designed a mobile app called College Finder.
And that's it? How nice. Next, we'll move into special communication requests. We have two people this evening signed up for special communication request. People who want to speak are requested to submit a form at least five days in advance of the meeting. 10 speakers receive up to four minutes to share comments. If there are more than 10 requests, a lottery is conducted to determine those 10 speakers. Speakers may not allow their time to others, and we use a timer for public comment, and will remind speakers when they have 30 seconds remaining. We expect speakers to finish their remarks when their time expires. Speakers are also reminded not to share complaints about specific employees or make inappropriate comments. Opinions shared during the public comment portion of the meeting do not necessarily represent the views of the school board or the district. The audience is expected to remain calm, civil, and not to disrupt the speakers from being heard. Speakers, when you come to the podium, please share your name and your connection to the school district. Our first speaker this evening is David Bester. Good evening, David.
Hello, my name is David Bester. I'm a resident here in the school district, and thank you for letting me speak. And just an acknowledgement to all these wonderful kids that you had up here, it's awesome. So I'm gonna start. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights. Among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their powers from the consent of the governed." This is an excerpt from the Declaration of Independence, and it comes to some obvious conclusions, including the existence of a Creator. Some people over the years have insisted there is no Creator or God, but legitimate scientists have observed the fine details and accuracy involved in our universe. Even Stephen Hawking concluded that if the density of the universe were changed by 1 ten-trillionth of a percent, no stars or galaxies would be formed. He is also quoted as saying it would be difficult to explain why the universe would have begun in just this way, except as an act of God, who intended to create beings like us. That sounds self-evident, doesn't it? Stephen Hawking was a self-proclaimed atheist, free to choose what he believed, but he could not deny the existence of God. With the accuracy of that single detail multiplied by the other details, such as the size and placement of the sun, moon, and planets, property of water, or even life itself, any legitimate mathematician would conclude that it is virtually impossible, for existence has just randomly happened. Couple that with the fact that without some outside influence, things tend to decay and not self-create. That also sounds self-evident, doesn't it? Could we consider that there is a God, and the Bible is correct when it said, "In the beginning God created the heavens and the earth"? Could we also consider that the Bible may be true when it says that God created men? In His own image, in the image of God, He created them. Male and female, He created them. Consider the beauty of the world and how some are given gifts, such as artists, musicians, and athletes. And by the way, we saw radio days at the Rosemount High School. What a wonderful performance and display of talent. Consider the flowers of our earth, and it seems like their only purpose is for our enjoyment. It seems self-evident that there is a God, and He loves us, doesn't it? Let's consider history and that what good men can do, such as Abraham Lincoln, who was instrumental in freeing the captives. Also consider the ugliness and evil that men can do, like Adolf Hitler, who in his reign of tyranny captured and murdered millions, and how the truth at the time was covered up and hidden by his propaganda machine. Let's consider there are forces of good who give people freedom to choose the truth, and forces of evil that bring people into captivity and hide the truth. Let's stop insisting there is no God when science, math, history, and the arts all point to this self-evident truth. Let's consider there is a God that exists within and beyond our five senses. Let's not get stuck in the 1960s, when we were taught that some absurd theory of evolution that has no basis in truth. We're trusting you as our elected officials to lead our students in the truth. I will end with a quote by Robert Jastow, scientist and author of God and the Astronomers. "For the scientist who has lived by faith in his power of reason, the story ends like a bad dream. He has scaled the mountains of ignorance. He is about to conquer the highest peak. As he pulls himself over the final rock, he is greeted by a band of theologians who have been sitting there for centuries." Thank you.
Thank you, David. Our next speaker this evening is Bessie Erickson.
Good evening, superintendent, members of the board, District 196 families, and those of you listening at home. My name is Bessie Erickson, and I'm addressing you all today on behalf of my sixth-grade Rosemount Middle School student and on behalf of many families impacted by the attendance area adjustment proposal. We're in the unfortunate position of being the collateral damage to this poorly timed and ill-planned proposal. Let's be clear, that while some small adjustments were made to this proposal, such as expanded sibling preference and intra-district transfer priority, those just do not make a dent in the psychological damage this will have on a number of sixth- and seventh-graders who live in the wrong neighborhoods and have no older siblings to carry them into Rosemount High School. If you had to make a choice, to cut off your hand today or cut off your foot in two years, what would you choose? That's essentially what this proposal is asking families to do in just two short months. We're forced to choose whether to rip our children out of the communities they know come next school year or let them stay through eighth grade and rip them out their freshman year in high school. Time and time again, through phone calls, emails, and in-person conversations, I and other parents have pleaded for consideration of these sixth- and seventh-graders, only to have those pleas fall on deaf ears. For those of you listening at home and in this audience, I want you to really understand how this district board and staff is operating. This proposal is not new. It was on the table in early 2019, and at that time, it was only a short-term fix to the overcrowding problem that is so visibly obvious, it's hard to fathom how anyone could fail to see the vast expansion of homes built every day in eastern Rosemount. The board had no long-term plan to address this overcrowding then, and there is no long-term plan today. In fact, a long-term planning committee was barely established this year. It's also plain to see the prioritization of neighborhoods. While the plan in 2019 included two additional neighborhoods, the 2021 version conveniently omits those two neighborhoods. And when asked directly about what influenced this decision, board and staff members denied any influence. The maps, however, are clear. Whether through quiet neighborhood conversation, in passing chit-chat among acquaintances, or perhaps by idle legal threat, it's clear that some neighborhoods were given preference in this decision. They must think we're as blind as they are. You will hear throughout the presentation what a difficult position the board is in and how this is not an easy decision. The truth is, the families are the ones in difficult positions, through irresponsible lack of planning by
live in the wrong neighborhoods and have no older siblings to carry them into Rosemont High School. If you had to make a choice, to cut off your hand today or cut off your foot in two years, what would you choose? That's essentially what this proposal is asking families to do in just two short months. We're forced to choose whether to rip our children out of the communities they know come next school year, or let them stay through eighth grade and rip them out their freshman year in high school. Time and time again, through phone calls, emails, and in-person conversations, I and other parents have pleaded for consideration of these sixth and seventh graders, only to have those pleas fall on deaf ears. For those of you listening at home and in this audience, I want you to really understand how this district board and staff is operating. This proposal is not new. It was on the table in early 2019, and at that time, it was only a short-term fix to the overcrowding problem that is so visibly obvious, it's hard to fathom how anyone could fail to see the vast expansion of homes built every day in eastern Rosemont. The board had no long-term plan to address this overcrowding then, and there is no long-term plan today. In fact, a long-term planning committee was barely established this year. It's also plain to see the prioritization of neighborhoods. While the plan in 2019 included two additional neighborhoods, the 2021 version conveniently omits those two neighborhoods. And when asked directly about what influenced this decision, board and staff members denied any influence. The maps, however, are clear. Whether through quiet neighborhood conversation, in passing chit-chat among acquaintances, or perhaps by idle legal threat, it's clear that some neighborhoods were given preference in this decision. They must think we're as blind as they are. You will hear throughout the presentation what a difficult position the board is in, and how this is not an easy decision. The truth is, the families are the ones in difficult positions, through irresponsible lack of planning by the district. Some of you may choose to speak during the open forum, and I really hope you do. Then the board will have the last say, and just like in past discussions, this decision will be justified, and our students will be the collateral damage. Thank you.
Thank you, Bessie. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda this evening, we have the minutes of the November 8, 2021 regular school board meeting. We have the minutes of the November 22, 2021 special school board meeting. We have gifts, we have quarterly gifts, we have grants. We have treasures report for October 2021. We have summary of claims for October 2021. We have schedule of investments for October 2021. We have revenues and expenditures report for October 2021. We have a personnel revised exhibit. We have an employee agreement. We have student expulsion. Pay rates for substitute temporary and part-time employees. Pay rates for substitute temporary and part-time community education employees. We have clinical school counseling experience with Adler Graduate School. We have student-teacher agreements. We have combined precinct and designated polling places. We have a police liaison service agreement with the City of Apple Valley, the City of Eagan, and the City of Rosemont. We have the Confucius Institute Joint Powers Agreement, and we have the inter-agency Early Intervention Committee Joint Powers Agreement. Easy for me to say. With that, board, is there any items on the consent agenda the board members would like to remove this evening? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion and a second to approve?
A move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Sutchen and a second by Mike to approve the consent agenda as outlined. All in favor of the consent agenda, indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That passes on a seven-zero vote. This evening, we'll go into items of report. Our first report is our 2021-22 Truth and Taxation Hearing. We'll call up Mark Stotts, and I would like to add that this presentation is the official truth and taxation hearing. There will be an opportunity at the end for the public to ask questions, so then we'll turn it over to Mark Stotts.
Thank you. Chair Magnuson, Superintendent Krieger, members of the board. This is our annual truth and taxation hearing that's required by Minnesota's state statute. State law requires that we must meet between November 25 and December 28. Here we are on December 13. The meeting must be held 6:00 PM or later. It may be part of a regularly scheduled meeting like we're doing this evening. We must allow for public comment, and you can adopt the final levy at the same meeting. And tonight, we'll go through the current-year budget, which is required by statute, and also the proposed property tax levy. Again, the agenda tonight, we'll give you a little background on school funding. We'll talk about the district's budget, and later this evening, Christopher will be going through the final budget for the current year. And then we'll talk about the district's proposed property tax levy for payable 2022, and then public comment. Just a reminder, the Minnesota Constitution, one of the charges in that constitution is for a uniform system of public schools, and the legislature shall make such provisions by taxation or otherwise. So this is a very, very important part of how the school districts operates and how the state operates in terms of public education funding. Funding's highly regulated. You hear me say this every year when we're going through the proposed property tax levy and the final levy, but the school board really has little control over property tax levies. It's different than cities and counties where they can arbitrarily increase property tax levies. The state sets the formulas which determine our revenue. They set the tax policy for school districts, and they also set what the maximum is the school board can adopt for the levy. About the only way a district can increase revenues over and above what the state legislature has set is to go for operating referendums or capital bond referendums. So since 2002, 2003, the general education formula, which represents a majority of the funding that we receive as a school district, has fell behind inflation. For the current year, we received a 2.45% increase to the general education formula. Next year, it is set at 2%. If the formula had kept pace with inflation over the years, we would have to see another increase of $598 to keep pace with inflation. And this is just a graphical representation of that. One thing we should keep in mind, there's a lot of discussion about special education and the underfunding of special education. Again, as we've said in previous meetings, nobody argues the benefit and the importance of special education. However, how we provide that special education is dictated by state and federal laws, but the funding doesn't follow that. Underfunding causes a situation where the general fund, it's called a cross subsidy, so the general fund has to support special education in addition to the revenues that we receive from the state and federal governments for that purpose. Another important point for people to remember is that a change in our tax levy does not necessarily equate to an increase in revenues for the school district. Many times, you'll see the legislature act on property tax levies where they either lower or raise the property tax levies, but at the same time, there may be a corresponding increase or decrease to our state funding. And so just because we have an increase in our tax levy does not mean that we have an increase to our overall revenues because of the impact it might have on state funding. Cities and counties, their budget year is calendar year, so their 2022 taxes are the revenue that they receive for the 2022 calendar year. School districts are different. Our fiscal year runs July 1 to June 30 every year. So the taxes, the property taxes that we're talking about tonight for pay 2022, will actually be revenue in the 2223 school fiscal year, and same with the budget that we're going to be discussing. Just a reminder on budget information, we do have various funds that are required by state law. Our district funds are listed here. The main ones to note, I guess, are the general fund, which is, in effect, the fund that operates the school district on a day-to-day basis. It pays salaries, utilities, transportation costs, and so forth. We also have the food service fund, and community service fund, building construction fund, debt service fund, and then you can see the other ones as listed. This is a snapshot of the current-year budget in the last three columns. And again, tonight, Christopher will be presenting the final budget for the current year, and so you'll see a little bit more of that. But in aggregate, we're projecting a total fund balance at the end of 2022 of $188,928,053. Sounds like a big, big number. It is a big number, but we have an awfully big budget. And if you look at the general fund and look at those fund balances in relation to what our annual expenditures are, the board sets a goal of 5%. We are above that at the current time. There's many reasons for that. In particular, the pandemic last year created a situation where, in many cases, buildings didn't spend their allocated funds because they weren't running the same activities that they do during the normal year. So we will see a spend-down in that fund balance next year, but for the current year, we're looking like we're in really, really good financial shape. If you look at our revenues, obviously, this pie chart indicates that the general fund is the biggest source of our revenues at about $427 million. Next biggest source is the internal service fund, and that is for our self-insured health and dental plans. And then you can see the others listed there. Within the general fund, you can see the biggest share of our funding comes from the state of Minnesota, the state legislature, which I was referring to previously. And then the second-largest source of our revenues is local property taxes, which is listed there at about 24%. If you look at our expenditures, you can see by this pie graph that a majority of our expenditures go directly to the classroom. You know, a number of years ago, many of you will recall when Governor Ventura was in office, and they had kind of set an arbitrary target of 70% of the district's revenues going to the classroom. We exceed that. I don't know if 70% is a valid number or not. Nobody was ever really able to give me an explanation on that, but as a district, we really try to direct our resources to the classroom. And then if you look at it by object, we are in the people business, and if you add together the salaries and wages in the district and employee benefits, it's about 83% of our overall general fund budget. And so, again, we're in the people business. That means when we talk about programs, we're talking about people to run those programs, and that's where a majority of our resources go. If we look at the current-year levy, I'll go through how we, the determination of levy, compare it to the 21-year reasons, or the major reasons for the increases in the tax levy, and then impact on individual taxpayers. Little background, every owner of taxable property pays property taxes to various taxing jurisdictions. So it may be the city, the county, the school district. Those are the most three common jurisdictions, but there's also special jurisdictions with taxing authority like watershed districts and so forth. Each taxing jurisdiction sets its own tax levy, and many times, that's based on limits and state law. And then the county sends out the bills, collects the property taxes, and distributes the funds to the various jurisdictions. And this is just an example of a statement many people in the audience and probably received this past month, and that's the proposed property tax statement. And that will show the breakdown of the taxes between city, county, school district, and any other jurisdictions with taxing authority. School property taxes are somewhat complicated. There's basically over 40 different categories that a district is allowed to levy in, and the maximum amounts are either set by state law, that's a majority of those categories, or voter approval, if voters have approved an operating levy or a bond referendum. And I'm going to go through the steps on the next slide, which many of you are familiar with. The city or county assessor determines the estimated market value for each parcel of property within the district. Legislature sets the formulas for tax capacity. The county auditor calculates the tax capacity for each parcel, and the legislature sets the formulas which determine the school district levy limits. Then, the Minnesota Department of Education calculates the levy limits, and the school board adopts a proposed levy in September, which you did. And after a public hearing, which we're in the middle of right now, we're going to ask for the board's approval on the final levy here in December. And ultimately, the county auditor divides the final levy by the district's total tax Again, summary, September 8, the MDE prepared and distributed the first draft of the levy limits. On September 27, the board adopted the proposed levy, and that's what people saw on their proposed property tax statements that came out last month. In December, tonight, we're having a public hearing on the proposed levy, and then you'll be asked to approve or certify the final levy amount. Overall, for 2022, we're proposing an increase from 2021 of about $3.3 million, or 2.7% on the total levy. And here, you can see it based on its various categories that we're levying in. The general levy represents about a 3.2% increase. Community service, about 2.3%. Debt service, about a 0.2% increase. And all funds, it's 2.7%. So in the general fund, what is driving that 2.7% increase? Obviously, we have an operating referendum in place, and it is also adjusted annually for an inflationary factor that's determined by the state, and that's the main thing driving the increase in the operating levy. Instructional leases, the board approved two different instructional leases during the current year, with the first payments being next year. The first one was for the turf fields at Apple Valley High School and Eastview High School, which were completed this past fall. And then the educational facility for the Alternative Learning Center up in Eagan, which we've referred to as the Silver Bell Learning Center. Factors that impact individual taxpayers. Number one, if there's a change in the assessed value of somebody's property, that's going to have an impact on the amount of property taxes that they pay. Changes in the total values of all properties within the district is going to influence how the property tax levy is spread amongst individual properties. And then, obviously, we can have increases or decreases due to state funding formulas. I'm going to go through some comparisons here, and it's based on property in the city of Eagan. These are preliminary estimates, which were put together by Ellers, which is our municipal financial advisor. And here, if you look at, and I know the print is rather small, but property with an estimated market value in 2022 of $400,000 would show an increase of $43 for the year. And then you can see the impact on commercial, industrial, and apartment properties. And this is just a graphical representation at the various levels. $200,000 valued home, $300,400, $3,500. Just a reminder, there is some property tax relief that is available to taxpayers, but you have to meet certain criteria. The first one is referred to as the Minnesota Homestead Credit Refund, or the Circuit Breaker. It's been around since the 1970s. It's available to owners of homesteaded property with annual incomes $116,180 or less. There's also the Minnesota Special Property Tax Refund, and it's available to each year to owners of homesteaded properties with a gross tax increase of 12% and over $100 from the prior year. And then finally, there's the Senior Citizens Property Tax Deferral for people over the age of 65 with household incomes of $60,000 or less. With that, I would entertain any questions from the board, and then just a reminder that we do have to allow for public comment.
Yes, first we'll ask if there are board members with questions, just for clarification. Then this is our truth and taxation hearing. Sometimes, in years past, we've had this on a separate night, but I'll ask if there are any questions or comments from the audience on the specific tax information that Mark has just presented. Seeing none? Thank you. Mark, do we move right into... There's nothing we have to approve on this, because this is the taxation, just the information part. Do we... It's just...
So now we move to approval of the property tax levy? I believe that was the next item on the agenda.
Yes. So we've got the 2021 payable 2022 property tax levy limitations. We'll go ahead and have you propose those.
Okay. So based on the information... Okay, so based on the information that I just presented, we are proposing a final levy for 2022 of $124,766,022.23. Again, it represents a 2.7% increase compared to taxes payable in 2021. And I would recommend approval of this recommendation.
With that, this is an old business item tonight, so it's an action item. So before we move into discussion, I'll ask for a motion in a second.
Motion approved.
Second.
The motion by Craig, a second by Joel. Are there questions or comments from the audience on our property tax levy limitations payable for 2022? Seeing none, questions from the board? With that, we have a motion by Craig, a second by Joel, that we approve the 2021 payable 2022 property tax levy limitations. As outlined, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed? Thank you, that passes on a 7-0 vote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stotts. Next on the agenda this evening is the attendance area adjustments. We'll call up Michael Balsani and Steve Trone to walk us through the adjustments. Again, this is an action item this evening, so we will be looking for a vote.
Okay, good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Krieger, Chairperson Magnuson. Director Michael Balsoni, Director of Secondary Education, and myself are here this evening with a second reading as old business with the attendance area recommendations. This evening, we'll be walking through and recommending approval for the tenancyary adjustments that would relieve current and future overcrowding at Rosemont High School and Rosemont Middle School by using space at existing schools, provide sibling preference and enrollment options for affected families so students can finish out their academic career at their current school, and complete the first step of a two-step process to address district facility needs. I also want to pause here and be intentional too, as we have throughout this process, of recognizing fully that this is, can be, and is an emotional process for families. And we recognize that there's strong school-community ties. And I think District 186 takes pride at each building in fostering those ties. And so we walk through this with that in mind, while also fully recognizing the significant overcrowding currently at Rosemont High School and Rosemont Middle School and the future overcrowding as well. I'm trying to balance that as we move forward with these recommendations. So this evening, we'll give a brief, I guess revisiting of the purpose and rationale and process used, which we highlighted at the November 8th board meeting as well. Also a brief summary of the recommendations. And then we'll dive into detail on the enrollment options and recommended next steps. So again, our foundational purpose and rationale. We were charged with developing recommendations for tenancyary adjustments that would provide relief to current and future overcrowding at Rosemont Middle School and Rosemont High School, and maximize use of available space currently at other schools in the district. As we began the process, we were also charged by the board to develop recommendations for tenancyary adjustments that maintained, to the extent possible, similarly sized schools at each level, high school, middle school level. Responsibly use existing space across the district, and also to explore phase-in implementation that would allow students to finish their academic career at their current school. And again, the main focus was on Rosemont High School and Rosemont Middle School, looking at their current enrollment and projected enrollment and their capacity. Both schools, as you know, are significantly currently over capacity, and that's projected to grow in the coming years. And the majority of the future growth, long-term, district growth is projected to continue to be in the Rosemont High School, current Rosemont High School attendance area, the southeastern portion of the district. So the idea is to address that current and short-term overcrowding, okay? And being mindful that, again, planning needs to continue as we look at that 10-year and even 15-year need in the district, according to enrollment projections. Our process dates back to July of 2019 with initial discussions with the school board about the need for attendance area adjustments as a first step in that facilities process long-term. Conversations continued in July 2020. The school board endorsed a process for attendance area adjustments, explored what that process would look like in some sample areas in terms of looking further at the enrollment projections. However, as you know, the board decided to postpone the process due to the pandemic. And all of our energy in the district was focused on meeting the needs of the pandemic at that time. In July 2021, the administration restarted the attendance area under approval from the board, and moved forward with a proposal for attendance area adjustments. This past fall, there was communication to families in a variety of means. Information meetings that were held at Rosemont Middle School, Rosemont High School, and Scott Highlands Middle School. Electronic input form was in place to gather input. We had school board listening sessions, which I believe totaled three during this process, in addition to the formal presentations at the school board meeting, most recently on November 8th. I'll sum up recommendations on a broad level. I won't go into details we did at the November 8th board meeting in terms of geographics. If needed, I have the maps available to zoom in further if that is needed. But at the high school level and the middle school level, we looked at the Rosemont High School and Rosemont Middle School attendance areas. At the high school level, we looked at the, I guess, the periphery geographically of a current Rosemont High School attendance area. And we looked at students in those areas. And historically, we looked at the enrollment pattern for, do they attend Rosemont High School, or do they elect to attend a nearby school? And then also looked at the current and projected numbers of students in those areas. We also arrived at a number that we believe needed to, we needed to reach in order to give that significant growth, to relieve that growth at Rosemont High School and Rosemont Middle School. I'll talk about that in just a minute. And at the Rosemont Middle School attendance area, we followed the same principle, looking at the data and looking at the periphery of the Rosemont Middle School attendance area. The unique piece about the middle school attendance areas is that the nearest middle school to Rosemont Middle School directly to the west is Scott Highlands Middle School. Scott Highlands is at capacity, or slightly over capacity. And so for the middle school, we had to do a two-step process with these recommendations where we had to move students, recommend and move students out of Scott Highlands Middle School, into Falcon Ridge Middle School and the Valley Middle School in order to create room for students from Rosemont Middle School. So it was kind of like a double move. Same basic principle in looking at the attendance area, but Scott Highlands, basically at the end of the process, the idea was to hold Scott Highlands level with their enrollment, but shifting students out and shifting students in. There also was one small, very small elementary attendance area included in this as well. And there was just a handful, two or three students at one of our elementary schools that if we move forward with these middle school and high school changes, there was an anomaly in terms of three students in a school that wouldn't be a part of the rest of that school's vertical attendance area, if you will, from elementary to middle school to high school. So there was one small parallel elementary change recommended to give that vertical alignment with this as best as we could. In terms of net effect, at Rosemont High School, the net effect would be to shift 600, approximately 600 students by the end of the four-year phase-in out of the Rosemont High School attendance area. However, the true net effect during that time is projected to be about 345 students. There's two factors at work. There's the gradual shifting of students out of Rosemont High School's attendance area in this plan, and there's growth during those four to five years at the same time. So as you look at those two factors together, the net effect or reduction on enrollment at Rosemont High School is projected to be about 345 students, which would bring Rosemont High School to 2,100, which is within their capacity. Then being mindful that it projected to continue to grow after that. But it's balancing those two factors, students moving out over the course of four to five years, and growth within the remaining attendance area at the same time. Rosemont Middle School, same idea, but on a smaller scale, okay? Shifting out a total of 180 students over time during that phase-in, and then a slight increase in enrollment in the existing, the remaining Rosemont Middle School attendance area at that time. And that results in that net reduction of 80 students. Scott Highlands Middle School would be held very similar to their current enrollment, where shifting students out, okay, and shifting students in gradually over time. This does impact the proposed plan, recommended plan, does impact other schools in the district. A sampling of that, and we touched on this at the November 8th board meeting as well, at the end of the process, adding about 100 students to Apple Valley High School's attendance area. During that same timeframe, adding 100 students to the Eagan High School attendance area. 400 students being added to the Eastview High School attendance area. And I'm going to pause there, talk about Eastview High School again a little bit. Currently, Eastview High School has the smallest attendance area in the district for a high school. If you look at the students that actually reside in that attendance area, okay? About 30% of Eastview High School's current enrollment, and historically, the last few years, has been to inter-district transfer and open enrollment. At the end of this gradual shift, we project that that percentage would go down to about 15%. So broadening Eastview High School's attendance area gradually, and lowering or cutting in half gradually the percent of their student body through inter-district transfer and open enrollment. At the middle school level, the net result would be adding about 100 students to the Falcon Ridge Middle School attendance area, and they are significantly under capacity currently. Adding about 100 students to the Valley Middle School of STEM, but still allowing Valley Middle to be a magnet school, and taking students through inter-district transfer and open enrollment in addition to that. And then adding about 65 students to the Dakota Hills Middle School attendance area at the end of the process. So that's a quick summary of the geographic areas, the net effect, and the process. I'm going to turn it over to Director Michael Balsoni, Director of Secondary Education. He'll talk in more detail about the phased-in implementation and the enrollment options for families.
Okay, thank you, Steve. So the phased implementation will begin with the current, or the upcoming school year as students register coming up in the next few months here. It is a four-year phase-in for the high school, giving grades eight through 11 an option to stay at their current high school, or eighth graders to move up. And for the middle school, it's a two-year phase-in process, allowing sixth and seventh graders to stay at their current school or choose to go to the new high school, or the new middle school available to them. It does involve some family and sibling preference options. And we also have intra-district transfer preference, which was newly created for this program based on families in the affected attendance area zones. And I'll explain each of these in a little bit more detail. So when we talk about high school enrollment options, current grades, ninth, 10th, and 11th grade students attending Rosemont High School could choose to attend their new attendance area high school, depending on which zone they're in, or remain at Rosemont High School through graduation with transportation provided. Our current eighth grade students registering for high school for next year could choose to attend their new attendance area high school or attend Rosemont High School through graduation with transportation provided as well. When we look at middle school, the proposal allows sixth and seventh grade, current sixth and seventh grade students to choose to attend their new or current attendance area middle school through grade eight with transportation provided. Our current fifth grade students would attend their new attendance area middle school. Sibling preference, we created a sibling preference to allow students in the affected areas, allowing them so that they could attend their current attendance area middle school or high school if they have an older sibling attending that school at the same time. And we were really careful about not trying to split families up at the same level who might have two students at that level and then attending two different schools. Some families do choose to do that, but we wouldn't make anybody do that. We would allow them sibling preference into that school. We also, through Rosemont High School, after listening to families and taking inputs electronically, opened up an option for current K through seven students in the affected areas with a sibling who graduated or will graduate from Rosemount. Based on any of the options that we presented here, they could also choose to follow a sibling who had graduated through Rosemont High School. So families who already have a graduate or upcoming graduate could continue that pathway for families. Transportation would be provided through the '25, '26 school year for high school students and the '23, '24 for middle school students. So at some point in that process for sibling and family preference, families would have to provide their own transportation. There's a small number of students who would be affected by the Mandarin magnet language pathway. And so we have current, we've created an option for current grades three through five students studying Mandarin at Diamond Path Elementary School and living in Middle School Area 2 to enroll at Scott Highlands Middle School via an intra-district transfer. So this enables them to continue the study of Mandarin. Transportation to Scott Highlands would end after the '23, '24 school year. And then those students would be in the pathway to attend Eastview High School, which offers Mandarin as well, so they could continue that language pathway. In preparation for this, we started looking at different options for families to make decisions based on the vote tonight. And so I'll talk through some of those, and I'll also give some examples. So students currently living, or students currently in grades kindergarten through seven residing in the affected zones, who do not have sibling or family priority, will be given preference in that intra-district transfer process that we're creating. And to qualify for this preference, we'll ask that applications are submitted by the annual deadline each time a student changes levels between elementary and middle, or middle and high school. So each year, we have students and families who apply for intra-district transfer, and we would give priority to these families before priorities to other families in the district if they are affected by these zones, but don't qualify for other sibling or family preference options that we've established. We're going to ask families to make an enrollment decision by January 5th. And currently, the intra-district student transfer application form deadline is December 15th, which is two days from now. And so anticipating that things may change based on the vote, we wanted to propose an extension of that deadline from December 15th to January 5th. That gives families time now. It also gives families a little bit of time after break to submit that application. Open enrollment, that's enrollment that comes from outside of our district. Those forms are due on January 15th, and they would be processed after the intra-district transfers. So let's look at a couple of examples, just to kind of help people understand if they would or would not need to fill out a form in these situations. So students currently attending a middle or high school will continue to remain enrolled at that school, their current school, without taking any action. So this is just one example. A current 10th grade student who attends Rosemont High School, who lives in Zone 1, that student would automatically maintain their enrollment at Rosemount for 11th grade. There would be no need for them, that student or family, to fill out an intra-district transfer form to stay at Rosemount. They would only need to fill out an intra-district transfer form if they wanted to opt into Eagan High School, since they're in that dual zone. So our rule of thumb here is that if the student's already attending, we would default them to the school that they are currently at, assuming that would be most students' choices. Here's an example, for a middle school student going to high school. So this is a current eighth grade student at Rosemont High School, I'm sorry, Rosemont Middle School, who lives in Zone 1. So if you remember, eighth graders have the option to choose either one. We are going to automatically enroll that student at Eagan High School because they've never attended Rosemount. So they're not currently at a school, they're switching levels. So they would default then to the new, the new attendance area school based on tonight's proposal. That family does not need to fill out a transfer form to stay at Eagan, but if they would like to opt to go to Rosemount, then they would fill out an intra-district transfer form by January 5th, and it would be automatically your guaranteed approval. So let's go to elementary. So students in fifth grade, who are now, their elementary school moving to a newly assigned middle school, and I'll give the same example of that Zone 1, that Inver Grove Heights area. A current fifth grade student attending Red Pine who lives in Zone 1, that student would be automatically enrolled at Dakota Hills Middle School for sixth grade. However, if applicable, an intra-district transfer form could be used to request enrollment at Rosemount if they qualify for family or sibling preference, as we described before. We will put out, oh, one more. We have a magnet pathway that I talked about with the Mandarin. This would be a current fifth grade student attending Diamond Path, who lives in Zone 2, takes Mandarin, planning to continue Mandarin. That student would be automatically enrolled at Falcon Ridge. However, they could do an intra-district transfer form to go to Scott Highlands, as we've mentioned, and they would get automatic approval for that. So we will outline these in a communication if this is approved tonight. That'll be available on our website and also sent to families to help them understand if they do or do not need to fill out an intra-district transfer form. Any family can fill out one if they know their preference, and they're just not sure, that wouldn't be a problem. But we tried to make it so that students who are currently at schools, who are less likely to transfer, would not have to do that.
All right, thank you, Michael. So in summary, in order to relieve overcrowding at Rosemont High School and Rosemont Middle School, and to maximize the use of available space, district administration has requested approval of the recommended attendance area changes, phased implementation, preference options, including siblings, Mandarin pathway, and inter-district transfer priority, and the adjustment, excuse me, the adjusted enrollment process timed... and the adjustment, excuse me, the adjusted enrollment process timeline for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. At this time, we'd be happy to address any questions you might have.
This is an action item this evening, so before we move into discussion, I will ask for a motion and a second.
Move, second.
We'll give a motion to Mike and a second to Joel. With that, I will ask if there are any audience members who would like to speak tonight and if you would raise your hand so we know, because we usually limit, we limit that to seven speakers. And if there are more than seven, we will do a random draw. Perfect. So come on up over here and we'll ask you to state your name, and we will see if we can answer your questions.
Good evening. My name is Jake Rylender. I'm a resident of the district, and I was one of the former candidates for school board, and this was a pretty hot button issue for many people that I resonated with. When it comes to this decision, I understand the complexities, the issues, but I would like to remind the, excuse me, remind the board that you are representatives of the community first and foremost. And I believe it is your duty to either table this discussion till after the new elected board members can have a chance to speak with stakeholders, because they're the ones that are ultimately going to have to own this. I believe that's appropriate considering the closeness of the election that we just had. I also believe that, again, it's your duty to represent the community where it's been overwhelming public feedback, and I believe feedback through the ways that the district can measure this metrics, that the people that are affected by this are not in favor of this. Now, that means more hard work for everybody here, including Michael and Steve, who have done a great job presenting and looking at these options. But it's hard work that we are capable of doing and looking for alternative solutions. Another big concern of mine is addressing the transportation needs of the, kind of the carrot that we've offered families that we will provide transportation to these schools. As many people know, transportation is a huge issue right now. I'm concerned that we can barely meet our current needs, and trying to add to that is only going to add more pressure. And I honestly don't believe we can actually fulfill that promise to families, at least not in a timely manner. Other than that, again, Michael, Steve, I appreciate the work that goes into us. There is no easy answer to this in the long term. But because we have a phased in response, there's one thing I do know that time is not, and I'll say again, time is not of the essence. All right, we do have the ability to table this discussion, look for alternative solutions, and actually represent the people that this affects. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like? Go ahead and come on over here and state your name.
Hi, Bessie Erickson again. So I just wanted to make sure that I understand a clarification, which I think maybe is not clear for some of us that are in the audience. The intra-district preference for students who are currently affected or enrolled in K through seven, that intra-district option, am I correct in understanding that that is only available should there be capacity at the school that's being requested? So current high school, middle schools who are currently at capacity or capacity plus five percent, even if an affected family requests an intra-district transfer, it actually would not go through because those schools are already at capacity plus five percent. Can you just clarify? That's correct. Okay, thank you.
Michael, do you want to affirm that into the microphone so people can understand?
Yeah, that's I'm mumbling back there, but everybody can't hear. Thank you, Bessie. That's a great clarification. So that preference is set up to give families preference based on the capacity. And so our board policy states that schools can accept intra-district transfers to capacity plus five percent and open enrollments to capacity if there's still room after that process is over. So we talked tonight about some ways that we would guarantee students through, for a period of time, a guaranteed intra-district transfer process. And so those were the sibling, the family preference, the Mandarin preference we talked about. And then we also decided to put in a preference layer that isn't guaranteed. But for example, if there continue to be, Steve had talked about maybe fifteen percent of students at Eastview open enrolled, and there might be students from all over the district who are applying for that, we would give preference first to those in that zone to take those spots based on capacity before we would open it up to the rest of the district.
Okay, that makes sense. Are there any other questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll close the questions from the audience and we'll ask for questions and comments from board members. Any board members with questions or comments this evening before we proceed to the vote? Seeing none? All right, we've got a motion by Mike, a second by Joel to approve the attendance area adjustments as outlined. All in favor of the attendance area adjustments indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That passes on a seven-zero vote. Next item for old business this evening is the middle school and high school course revisions for 2022, 23. And Steve Trowne is up here to walk us through the course revisions.
Okay, good evening once again, Chairperson Magnuson, members of the board, Superintendent Krieger. At the November eighth board meeting, I had an opportunity to present an overview of the annual course revision process for middle schools and high schools in addition to describing in detail some of the specific proposed changes for the 2022, 23 school year. Course revisions are prepared annually at each middle school and high school, and recommendations are made to add, drop, replicate, restructure, or rename courses. Principals discuss the proposed revisions with the Directors of Secondary Education and Teaching and Learning. And following board approval, the course revisions become part of the materials for the registration process that begins each January. A detailed listing of course revisions was shared in the board packet for the November eighth board meeting and is also included in today's packet for reference. I'm presenting the proposed 2022, 23 course revisions this evening as old business, and I'm recommending approval. I'm also happy to answer any related questions you might have at this time.
Perfect. This is, as Steve said, this is an action item this evening. So before we move into discussion, I will ask for a motion and a second.
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Suchan, a second by Craig. Are there questions and comments from the audience on our course revisions? They're interesting. You can probably, you can see them online if you're following our agendas. And they're updates or things that do things and things that have timed out and aren't applicable anymore. So with that, we don't have any questions or comments from the audience, questions and comments from board members? Seeing none, I think we talked about it at the last meeting. So with that, we have a motion by Suchan and a second by Craig to approve the middle and high school course revisions for 2022, 23. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Thank you. That passes on a seven-zero vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is new business. We've got our 2021, 22 final budget. We'll call up Christopher Anyan Robcha, and Christopher will walk us through the final budget. And this will be an item of new business this evening, so we will not be acting on it. The board will act on this budget item on January 10th.
Good evening, Chair Magnuson.
Good evening, Christopher.
Superintendent Krieger, members of the board, and the public stakeholders. Thanks for having me here this evening. I do not have a story to tell. So we'll go into the presentation for our final budget for the FY 21, 22 school year. So we're going to do it a little differently. Our compass this morning, this evening is three-pronged. So we'll look at the cycle, look at the cost, and then come back and see how this ties to the work that we are doing within the community. So a quick review of our budget cycle. The journey began last December of 2020 when the school board certified the levy. As Mr. Stotts alluded to earlier, the process of determining the revenue for the school district, actually, for next year's school revenue begins at the December board meeting. So for us, this process began December of 2020. In June, the school board took action on the preliminary budget. At the time that we reviewed this, we were developing it based on enrollment projections from the fall of 2020, and we used the funding appropriations that the legislature had provided during the previous session. The final budget we're presenting today incorporates the October one, 2021 enrollment data that we have. It also incorporates the revenue provisions that were adopted at the special funding session that the legislature concluded in July. So appropriations increases, as Mark alluded to earlier, of two-point-four-five percent increase in revenue that is included in this budget. Should there be any other adjustments to the budget, we will bring those to this in the spring of 2022. And then we anticipate that we will also go through and do an annual audit, which is basically our report on how our funding process and use of resources happen during the fiscal year. So that will take place in the summer and fall of 2022. On the cost side, so here's the second item on our compass. We have our operating fund, which includes the general food service and community service fund. I'll highlight a couple of items on the general fund. Revenues of $437 million that are being proposed. Three hundred and three million of these is from state sources. So it's about seventy percent of the revenue budget that we have on the general fund. Federal, there's been an increase, a lot of increase of funds from the, from the feds. Twenty-seven million dollars is included in here. It still is at six percent of our overall revenue. The next biggest chunk of funding we receive for the general fund is in property taxes, and included in this budget is $102 million or twenty-three percent of the budget. We do receive other funds from the local area, which includes donations, gifts, and any fees for various activities, and that's $5 million. On the expenditure side of the general fund budget, we are still spending eighty-two percent of our expenditures on direct instruction or instructional support. So this is what's going into the classroom or affecting special education, our tech ed, or any staff development items. So these are support to instructors to provide instruction to our students. Eighty-two percent of that, which is $370 million. Forty million of our expenditure budget, we are utilizing that to make sure that our facilities are taken care of. Most of that coming in the form of operating capital or a long-term facilities maintenance revenue. So it maintains the integrity so that the learning process can take place within the classroom. We are also spending $38 million in other areas. So this includes both building and site administration, district-wide administration, support services such as counseling, nursing, transportation. Thirty-eight million of our general fund expenditure budget is going toward those areas. On this chart, we also have food service and community service fund. Just to provide some context, the child nutrition budget helps with the learning process in that the kids are not squirming too much because they are, we're providing nutrition for them. We're proposing a budget of two point, we're projecting a fund balance of 2.8 million at the end of the fiscal year or twenty percent of the expenditure budget. Our community service fund, both revenues and expenditures are at 9.2 percent or thirty-six percent of the, $9.2 million within both revenues and expenditures. We're projecting a fund balance of 3.3 million or thirty-six percent of the expenditures for community ed. Other budget areas include our building construction fund. We have $10 million in revenues I propose. The school board will be taking action on an item which has to do with the purchase of our Silver Bell learning facilities. On the expenditure side, we will be spending those dollars from the debt issuance to purchase a Silver Bell learning center. And then we are also utilizing the funds approved last year to complete the work at the Eastview and Apple Valley High School turf fields. Our debt service revenues, mostly from property tax, is provided to pay for interest and principal obligations of our long-term obligations. Our internal service fund includes our health and dental insurance premiums on the revenue side, and then our claims payments for employee benefits for those two areas, health and dental. Our fiduciary fund includes our other post-employment benefits. We are anticipating revenue earnings from the account of 8.5 million and projecting that we will spend 4.5 million of that on obligations to our retirees. Overall, we have a budget that we're presenting of $557 million in revenues against $570 million in expenditures, anticipating an ending fund balance on June 30th, 2022 of $172,683,000. Now, this is a lot of money, and the question comes, why? Or how is this being utilized? So we'll go into that. The third item on our compass is looking at the community. The left side of these charts are looking at our enrollment. So the top graph is looking at overall enrollment, what we are anticipating to, the students we are anticipating to serve during this year, 29,086 students. The bottom pie chart gives a graphical representation of who those students are, where they're from racially. The right side of this page is looking at the individuals who are making things happen, both in the classroom or outside, as far as transporting students to and from, making sure that students are fed, and then making sure that the buildings are functioning and the staff within those buildings have the resources they need to ensure that learning and growth is taking place. I will highlight some fun things next. So the first one is in our community engagement, there's a lot of creativity that takes place. We spent a lot of time last year outside. We were not in our buildings. But when we came back in, that does not mean that just because we came back into the building, we have to stop thinking outside the box. And as Ms. Carlson exemplified this year, when the need for subs and making sure that learning is taking place, the constraints are there, she tapped into the parents. They already know the students, they know the building, and most of them have college degrees, and can they help the learning process take place? So big kudos to, on creativity to Ms. Carlson. On the right side, SES, learning takes place both in the classroom and then out in the field. And as the story exemplified, the SES group was out in the field testing balloons. The work that we are doing is not just within the building. We're trying to make sure that learning is happening, our graduation rate is high. Our ACT score, 22.9, is 1.3 percent higher than the state average. We had 646 AP scholars, and overall, when you look at the accomplishments, that $570 million is going toward making sure that the learning process is taking place. So creativity is a big chunk of what we do in this area. Collaboration is another thing that, another aspect of how we engage with our community. And on here, I'm highlighting two service departments, our food service and our transportation. So last year, school's not in session, parents are at home with their kids, and it's lunchtime, and the parent is on a Zoom call. Well, what are you going to do? Well, the food service and the transportation department partnered, collaborated, and made sure that the meals were going home. So instead of interrupting my Zoom meeting to go make lunch, I would say, go to the refrigerator, the lunch is packed, take care of yourself. You're a young adult, and I can go back and make sure that I'm meeting the needs of our students somewhere else. Overall, as a district, we own and operate our buses internally. We run 120 bus routes. We drive 2.5 million miles. We feed students 2.3 million meals each year. Twenty-three thousand students go to and from each and every day. Only two of those every once in a while would belong to me, but for the most part, we're making sure that the rest of them are making it home and to school safely. There are driver shortages, we're aware of that. But one of the things that Karen Dayon mentioned, we're now starting to about the department, is that they're still striving to ensure that when the students are picked up, when that yellow bus pulls in and they drop them off, we're giving them a good experience. And that happens when we are collaborating and working together. So creativity, collaboration, and finally, connection. We got a good community ed for this one, and this is my fun project, so Project Explore. Collaboration works in a lot of different ways. So last year during COVID, most districts who serve adults with disabilities shut this program down. We did not. We were creative in how we did it. We still did the Zoom meetings, we still engaged. And one of the things that, collaboration-wise, if I may highlight that, we are serving the residents of other school districts, so Barnesville, Farmington, Lakeville, Randolph. All those work within our community ed program together with our ISD 196, adults with disabilities. We're providing socialization. This is one community that when COVID hits and everybody's nerves are getting frayed, they need to stay connected, and we were able to provide that. So activities that they engage in include arts crafts activities, engaging their minds. So activities that they engage in include arts crafts activities, engaging their minds. They do bingo, and if you read the spotlight, they're going back to bowling. And last year, they couldn't dance inside, so they danced in the Valley Middle School parking lot. There's a plug, so that can be invited next year in case Kara gets to see this. They, as Bob St. Auburn said, they're keeping community in our education. So it's a process of making sure that all our learners, young, not too young, are still engaged in the process. Our recommendation this evening is for the school board to review the budget. We will be bringing it back at the January 10th, 2022 school board meeting. At that time, I would hope that the school board will adopt the budget. Accompanying this presentation is our budget book. This is the sibling to the big document that you receive in June. It's only 45 pages, so everybody can read it. It has a lot of information that I think would be helpful in terms of answering questions without having to get into the big book. So I will pause and see if there's anything I can provide clarification on.
Thank you, Christopher. We'll ask if there are questions or comments from the audience on our budget. Seeing none, board members, questions and comments? It's only 44 pages, you can read it. Cory.
I was just, I just wanted to say, this was a fantastic presentation. Sometimes our, sometimes our budget numbers aren't the most exciting things to go over, but the way that you structured it and talking about how we use the budget to engage with the community and how that's structured, I think it was amazing. And I just wanted to also underscore that that budget book you talked about is a fantastic resource for anyone in the community looking for more information on our budget. It's short, it takes a lot of really high-level concepts and breaks it down to every single fund. And I enjoy that book, I read it every time it comes out. Thank you.
It's got a lot of good information in it. Sutchen.
Thank you, Cory. I was gonna say similar things as well. You know, it always impresses me just as to how many folks are served by the district, right? I mean, even things like transportation, which we've talked about a lot recently. I mean, four out of every five kids we, is bused every day, which is a lot if you think about it. And the other number that I keep a track of, I know almost everyone else keeps a track of, is what percentage of our resources is going directly to our students. And that is always something that's important. And it's about, you know, 85-plus percent is going to the students. And if you look at the buildings that the students are sitting in, we're pushing over 95%. So really, kudos to directing the money right where we should be directing it to. And again, really good job summarizing the whole thing.
Exactly. Nicely done, Christopher. We will see you back on January 10th for Board Action. Thank you. We'll move on to other action items this evening. Our first other action item is the collective bargaining agreement with Support Staff Association of Independent School District 196. And Tom Peters will walk us through that.
Good evening, Chairperson Magnuson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. I'll be referring to the collective bargaining agreement with the school district's custodial, grounds, maintenance, and warehouse employees. These employees, represented by the Support Staff Association of ISD 196, ratified the proposed working agreement on November 13th. And I'll highlight the terms of the settlement for you. The wage and longevity schedules in this agreement were increased by 3% the first year and by 1.25% the second year. The freight driver and the mechanical specialist received an additional 25 cents per hour increase in the first year. The differential schedule was increased by 2.45% the first year and by 2% the second year. High school and double-school lead custodians also received an additional 25 cents per hour in the first year. The tax-deferred matching plan annual contributions were not increased. However, eligibility criteria for the beginning level of the match was reduced to allow earlier career employees to begin receiving the match. The district contribution to health insurance has been increased by 2% the first year and 5% the second year. There were also some minor language modifications. The total new costs during the term of this agreement are within the parameters you established. On behalf of the administration, I recommend that you approve the collective bargaining agreement I just summarized, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you, Tom. This is an action item this evening, so before we move into questions, I'll ask for a motion in a second.
Move approve.
Second.
Motion by Craig, second by Cory. Questions or comments from the audience? We'll look for questions and comments from board members. Craig.
Thank you, Tom, for recognizing the custodial staff. That's what keeps our billings in good shape and being creative and rewarding the people that have put the time in and making them want to stay. So I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Exactly. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Craig and a second by Cory to approve the collective bargaining agreement with our Support Staff Association of School District 196. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you, that passes on a 7-0 vote, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll call up Mark Stotts, and this is the Authorization for Sale of General Obligation School Building Refunding Bonds and Enrollment in the Minnesota School District Credit Enhancement Program. Good evening.
Good evening, again. I'm gonna turn it over to Jody. I just want to introduce her to those of you that don't know her. It's Jody Zespaz, she's with Ellers, our financial advisors. And I'm gonna let her talk about the refunding bonds, so.
Thank you, nice to see you, Jody. We haven't seen you for a while.
Right, great to see you too. And Jackie, I think this is your favorite topic, so I'm happy to be here tonight to talk about another refunding or refinancing opportunity.
I know, refinancing, just like refinancing your mortgage, it's just like.
Exactly, yeah. So similar to that, except you don't get to keep the money for your budget. You have to pass it along as savings to the taxpayers, which I'm sure they'll be happy to accept. So the bonds that we're talking about tonight have a call date of February 1st of 2022. So our plan is to take bids on the bonds at your January 10th meeting, and then we'll close on the bonds. We're expecting to save about $600,000 for the taxpayers over the next two years. So the savings would take effect starting with taxes payable of '23 and then also 2024. So if you're interested in seeing the favorite pages of this report, you can look to pages 10 and 13 to see the savings amounts. Those are our estimates. We certainly hope to achieve that, but we'll be back with the results on January 10th.
Super. So at this time, there is nothing that we really do have to, do we need to? Do we have to approve the motion to go ahead with the bonds?
Yes.
Correct. Thank you. So with that, I'll ask for a motion in a second to approve the authorization of the sale of the general bonds.
Move approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Sutchen and a second by Mike. Are there questions and comments from the audience? Questions and comments from board members? Saving and refunding $600,000 is a really good thing.
Yes.
And so we look back, we'll see you in February.
January 10th.
January 10th, I'm sorry.
Yep, I'll probably follow.
Because it was for the bonds.
Probably follow Christopher again, and I don't have any great graphics, but I'll do my best to have great numbers.
Christopher can help you out because he's got great graphics and great jokes if he want, if he prove, if he decides to tell them. So with that, we've got a motion by Sutchen and a second by Mike to approve the Authorization for Sale of General Obligation School Building Refunding Bonds and Enrollment in the Minnesota School District Credit Enhancement Program. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you, that passes on a 7-0 vote, and we'll see you back in January.
I'm gonna stay for the next agenda item, too.
You can do that.
Mark's just gonna let me keep going.
That's exactly right. We have the Authorization and Presale Report for the Certificates of Participation for the Silver Bell Learning Center. And Mark is standing way over there, so it must be all you.
Yeah, he's just gonna let me do this. Okay, so the certificates of participation are the same financing tool that we used to lease purchase the turf most recently. So the turf fields use the same financing mechanism. So that's what we plan to do. You have, you've already received approval from the Minnesota Department of Education for the lease levy. You saw that that was included as part of the tax hearing tonight. That that was highlighted as part of that, so you're all good to go on that. So we're expecting to take bids on this on January 10th and then close in early February also. Our estimated true interest cost rate right now is 2.14%. So that's over a 15-year term. You may remember that we got really excellent bids on your turf fields. So the 2020 certificates were sold at a 1.97% rate, and your 2021 at 1.15. Those were 10-year terms, and that's what's required for turf financing by Minnesota Department of Education. They do require a 15-year term, so that's why it's 2.14, which still sounds really, really nice and low, but a little, we're expecting it to be a little higher just because the term is longer.
Okay, okay. It is an action item this evening, so I'll ask for a motion in a second before we move into discussion.
Is it moved?
Second.
There was a motion by Cory, a second by Joel. Are there questions or comments from the audience over this? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? All good. So with that, we've got a motion by Cory, a second by Joel for the Authorization and Presale Report for Certificates of Participation for the Silver Bell Learning Center. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you, that passes on a 7-0 vote, and we'll see you again in January for this.
Sounds great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Lost my papers. The next item on the agenda tonight is the fiscal year 2020, 2021 Financial Audit Reports. Michelle Hoffman of Clifton Larson Allen LLP is going to walk us through the audit report.
I'm not Michelle. But it's a pleasure to work with her. So she represents an audit firm that at the conclusion of our budget process, they come through and they review how we did. And so this evening, Michelle is reviewing how financial work during FY '21 was concluded, so.
Thank you.
Nice to see you, Michelle.
Yeah, just print them out.
And good evening, thank you for being here this evening.
Yes, thank you so much, members of the board, District 196 families. Thank you so much for having me here today. As Christopher mentioned, I am here to present the fiscal '21 Audit Report. And I know you have, you know, I won't take up too much of your time. I know you've had already kind of a busy meeting. So go through some highlights, and I do have a PowerPoint, of course, presented for you here today up on the screen. And Christopher already introduced myself, but I will just again say, my name is Michelle Hoffman. I'm a principal with Clifton Larson Allen. I've been auditing Minnesota school districts for about 15 years now. So it's been, it's definitely been a pleasure to work with District 196. I will say Christopher does try to make jokes during the audit time, too, so I will. He definitely tries to use his sense of humor to sway the auditors. No, I'm just kidding. Tries to put us in a good mood because everyone loves the auditors, right? Everyone loves auditing. All right, so audit results for June 30th, 2021. So overall, you know, what we are doing is issuing, I will try not to walk too much away from the microphone, I apologize, we are issuing an opinion on your district's financial statement. So as an independent accounting firm, you know, we come in, take a look at the financial statements for the entire year, and ultimately, the year-end documents, about 200 pages, we are issuing an opinion on the financial statements and whether we can say that we feel they're free from material misstatement. So we are issuing an unmodified or clean opinion on the district financial statements for fiscal '21. I know it doesn't sound like all that exciting or fancy, but that is the best opinion we can give as an audit firm.
We like, we like not exciting and really boring when the auditor comes.
A non-exciting audit is good audit, usually, so.
Clean and unmodified is good.
So that is the best opinion we can give on the district financial statements. Yeah, if we felt that we couldn't, you know, fully complete the audit, something was missing, we would potentially have to modify or disclaim our opinion, which we are not doing. And, you know, in addition to just simply really diving into the numbers and the year-end numbers, we also look at a few other things, kind of a myriad of things, really, that are kind of related to state statutes and the district finances. So Yellow Book compliance, that is really sort of just a generic term for government auditing standards. It literally is a yellow book, so we call it the Yellow Book. And there is some compliance just around general government accounting in there that we would look at. We are not issuing any compliance issues with regards to Yellow Book requirements. Internal controls is another area we look at with the school district. As you know, the district has just a lot of activity, or a large district. You have a lot of transactions flowing in and out, year-end reconciliations. There is a really, just a lot going on in the finances. And as part of the audit, we look at all those different procedures, anywhere from just cutting a small, you know, called payable check, to large, you know, projects that you're bidding out, to payroll, to federal grants. And we take a look at all kinds of different procedures and reconciliations, you know, revenue coming in. And if we had any recommendations or items that we bring to, want to bring to the board, you know, areas for improvement, we communicate that to you in the internal control realm. And we just have one item we are noting related to the audit, where we did have just an adjustment related to claims payable that were not booked back to fiscal '21. They were included in the fiscal '22. It was kind of a right at the year-end kind of cutoff item. Otherwise, the rest of the kind of reviews and checks and balances we looked at all looked really good. Single audit, this, what this is referring to is your federal compliance audit. Any entity that expends more than $750,000 in federal funds in a given fiscal year has to have what we call a single audit. Again, that is a compliance audit over your various federal programs. Of course, your kind of usual ones you've had in the past are special education, your Title I, the Child Nutrition Program, and some other different programs. This year, we saw some new programs come down the chute from the federal government related to pandemic relief. So we do have a couple of new programs, brand new to the district, and of course, all of our other districts. So some, some really just new challenges for the finance team as they're dealing with some of these new programs, new compliance requirements. So I know it was a, it was kind of a lot of work for them, honestly, to deal with all these programs. So we would come in, you know, take a look, and we have to kind of, depending on the size of the program, the risk, we test two or three of them every year and against those federal compliance requirements. So this year, we tested three major programs. The Title I Program, the Education Stabilization Fund, which was the sort, kind of the second round of federal funds, and then the Coronavirus Relief Fund, which was the sort of first round of federal funds under the CARES Act. So we had those three major programs. Both actually, the new programs, the Education Stabilization Fund and CRF Program, looked good, and we have no items to report there. We do have one item related to Title I and just some payroll documentation with regards to just kind of making it, some of the federal requirements have specific payroll documentation requirements. So we have just a couple of recommendations out of a sample, a couple items that didn't quite have the proper documentation. Minnesota legal compliance, this is another area we look at. As you know, there are a lot of Minnesota state statutes that apply to school districts. And every year, the state auditor asks us to take a look at kind of another whole list of those items. And we go down all these different checklists, and really, there's a lot of nuances and ways that you could just be, you know, potentially have something be out of compliance. So anything for making sure your excess deposits that are in excess of FDIC coverage, collateral, going through the proper bidding channels, just a kind of a lot of different things. So we just have two recommendations with regards to Minnesota legal compliance. One with regard to a bid that was not held open for 14 days. I think it was posted for 12 instead of 14. And then looking at just some of the student lunch balances that are maybe, have been sitting there for a few years and actually remitting those to the state as unclaimed property. All right, so the next graph, and I apologize for those in the, in the audience here, it's a little small. But this is a look at your general fund audited fund balances. So when you take a look at your district financials, you can see the general fund balance. There's a bunch of restricted amounts, and that's, that's kind of the biggest piece I'm gonna focus on here. We have a couple other categories, as you can see, the top one being unassigned is really, everything that's kind of left that you can kind of spend on however you choose. But then there's a whole category here of restricted amounts that are really restricted, again, kind of by state statute and state mandate. So I just wanted to point out a few of these. And what we're doing in this graph is really showing the beginning fund balances in all those different categories, and then, of course, a total for the year. Your total revenue is kind of broken down into all those different categories, and then, and then what's left is in the unassigned. And then expenditures as well, that, you know, apply to those different categories, and sort of everything else being in that unassigned. And just a couple takeaways that I like to point out in here is that when you look at those restricted programs, the state certainly allocates you a certain amount of revenue for those programs. You know, we can see learning and development, you know, gifted and talented, things like that. And then you obviously, as a district, can put more funds into those programs if you so choose. So the transfer column there, I just like to kind of highlight and point out, that's where the district has seen some of these programs as value and actually put, you know, additional funds that you don't necessarily have to do into those programs. So you can see what you've transferred out of your sort of general pot of money into, you know, learning and development being a really good, a big one, obviously, which is kind of focusing on that student to staff, or you know, people to staff ratio and some other programs there. So just some highlights there where you can see where you've really kind of put some funds into some of these programs as well, in addition to just your, your kind of general programs. And this one looks even smaller. I'm not gonna touch too much on this, but this is the rest of the district's funds. I know Mark earlier spoke a little bit about, you know, you have your food service fund, your community service fund, sort of some additional funds in addition to the general fund. So this is the same graph, it really shows your annual revenues and expenditures for each of those funds and kind of how you ended up with your fund balance. So going back to just the general fund and the overall fund balance activity, we have a five-year trend here, looking back at the different, so those different categories I just kind of highlighted where we had very detailed. Now we have just a summary level of each of those four categories, looking back over the last five years. And of course, that really unrestricted or unassigned piece is kind of, kind of what's left, what the district has to really, you know, use and put into those programs or potentially have on hand for any contingencies. And we have a couple percentages, and that's what the graph is showing as well at the bottom, where your unrestricted fund balance as a percent of your annual expenditures, and then also your total fund balance as a percent of annual expenditures. So there was a nice increase in the general fund this year. The general fund in general was quite a bit under budget, a big piece you'll see here. A big piece you'll see here is due to, I mean, really, you know, salaries and benefits was a big piece of it as some of those open positions were, were kind of a struggle to fill. But so the general fund did have an increase in overall fund balances, you can see there. And your ending unassigned represents about 16% of your total expenditures. District policy is to keep that at, at least above 5%. So you've been above your policy the last five years. And we always recommend definitely at least in that 5, 6, 7%, if not a little higher, just, you know, just making sure you have funds on hand to sort of weather those storms. Quick graph on student enrollment. This total enrollment or ADM served, as we have up here, ADMs being average daily membership, did tick down for the first time in the last five years in 2021. I think that a lot of districts and charter schools saw that across the state, enrollment going down. And we kind of have a five-year trend graph as well, so you can take a look. One maybe thing I'd point out here is that you continue to have more students that choose to open and enroll into your district that don't necessarily aren't residents of the district versus open and rolling out. So obviously that shows you certainly have a desirable district, students are wanting to come attend your schools. General fund expenditures by budget, here we have sort of a budget actual by category and then just in total the last couple of years. And this is what I was alluding to, where you can really see where some under budget in the, definitely salaries and employee benefits category, but overall, the general fund as a whole was under budget by about 5% or about 20 million. All right, food service, overall, just operating results, revenue expenditures. Food service, of course, definitely, operations went down a little bit again as certainly impacted by the pandemic. And the district operated the, what we call the summer food service program, which it's a little misleading because it's operated the whole year, or it was at least during the pandemic. It typically is not. But that program is really generated and really reimbursed solely based on federal funding, whereas normally your regular lunch program gets state and federal aid and then you sell some meals to students. The summer food program really offered districts an opportunity to, to not have to worry about determining income eligibility for free and reduced meals and just said, you know, we're going to provide free meals to basically a lot of students who, who want to take advantage of that. So as a result, meal sales did decrease again in 2021, which is pretty common across the board in Minnesota as certainly not everyone is going to take advantage of that and with, you know, remote learning and things like that. So overall, just a quick graph here of meals served to students over the last five years, but definitely decrease in overall activity in the food service fund in 2021. Community service fund, I will say, I've seen a lot of community service funds that have taken pretty big hits the last couple of years and while there's been a slight decrease in activity in your community service fund, it hasn't been that dramatic. You know, you've been able to really still find ways, as you know, Christopher just talked a little bit about it, to still offer programs in however way you can. So community service fund actually had a pretty solid year in 2021. You can see, you know, revenues, expenditures and fund balance had an increase in fund balance. So, you know, still a little decline in activity, certainly not immune to effects of the pandemic. But overall, I think you've definitely done a good job of being able to still sort of operate that program and not have the community service fund really get hit hard. A quick expenditures per ADM, again, that's our average daily membership, again, comparison. And again, apologize, this is pretty small up on the screen, I bet. But so we have a five-year trend for Rosemont Independent School District 196. And we also have, the three columns on the left are, and they're, this is for 2020 because it's the most recent data we have, 2021 data is not out statewide. But we have all districts in the state of Minnesota on the far left. The seven county metro area is the next column. And then school districts with enrollment greater than 4,000 students is the next column. And it's breaking down expenditures by student in our different categories. So we have district and school admin is the first one, we get into regular instruction, some of the other categories. So for 2020, which is the only year we can really compare Rosemont to the statewide categories, you're quite a bit, you know, 200, $2,000, excuse me, less than kind of the state average as far as expenditures per student. And some interesting things to look at in this graph are certainly also where you're spending your money. For the most part, you're actually quite similar to the statewide districts in, you know, regular instruction, special ed, some of those areas. Quite a bit less in what we would consider not as much a direct instructional category as, you know, pupil support and transportation. So saving some money in some of those areas, you're also less in district and school admin than, you know, statewide average and, and large districts. So certainly something to maybe take away from that graph is that, that you're kind of spending less in total, but maybe spending closer in some of those direct instruction-related categories. And that comes to the end of my presentation. So does anyone have any questions on anything I went over or audit process in general? Or any other questions?
This is an, an action item this evening to approve the audit report. So before we move into questions, I'll ask for a motion in a second.
Is it moved?
Second.
We have a motion by Joel, a second by Cory. Are there questions or comments from the audience? I'm going to have Callie bring this audit report back to our Boy Scouts back there so that you can have, you can look at it a little bit closer. We have a Boy Scout team that's been sitting here all evening and, are you excited? It gets, this meeting got a little bit long. But we're glad that you're here and I'm going to have Callie bring this book back to you. The best thing about this is that it says expenditures per student. And you can see on here, she was just had it on the board, you can see what other, what people in the state spend in classrooms, on students, and what District 196 spends. There's a lot of information in here, but you might want to be able to see what that audit report was. And then it will make a little bit more sense. It was really hard to follow any of that up there, but you get an idea. And the audit here today is after all that was, there was nothing found that was, that was wrong. Any, any other questions, any questions from the audience? Questions from board members or comments? With that, Michelle, thank you. We've got a motion by Joel, a second by Cory to approve the fiscal year 2020, 2020, 2021 financial audit report. All in favor of the audit report indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you, or we should have said yea.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you so much. We'll call up Tom Peterston and he's got the next two agenda items and they are both calendar changes. This one might be a little bit more exciting for Boy Scouts.
Okay.
Good evening, Tom, thank you.
Okay, the first one I'll be referring to, the exhibit calendar change for 2021, '22 revised calendar. The school calendar before you tonight was initially approved at the December 14, 2020 meeting and then modified at the January 11, 2021 meeting. In consideration of the challenges the district has encountered during the pandemic in maintaining staffing of positions, covering teacher, paraprofessional, and nurse absences with substitutes, we are recommending that Thursday, December 23 be converted to a non-student day and be considered an extension of winter break. I recommend that you approve the 2021, '22 calendar changes I've just summarized and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Good, this is an action item this evening, so before we move into questions, I'll take a motion in a second.
Move to approve, second.
We have a motion by Sutchen and a second by Joel. Are there any questions or comments from the audience over this change in the calendar? This would add one more day to, to winter break. Do we get a thumbs up from the Boy Scouts back there? Oh, we got thumbs up from the Boy Scouts. Board members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, we've got a motion by Sutchen and a second by Joel to approve the calendar changes for 2021, '22. That would add one additional day to winter break and we've got thumbs up from the Boy Scouts. So all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you, that passes on a 7-0 vote. Next, we'll move on to the calendar changes for 2022, '23.
Okay, as Jackie just said, this is, I'll be referring to the exhibit on calendar changes for 2022, '23. The school calendar before you tonight was also initially approved at the December 14, 2020 meeting. After reviewing the start of school this past fall, we are recommending the following changes to next year's calendar. Conduct kindergarten transition half-days on August 29th and 30th. Conduct student assessment days for grades K-5 on August 31st and September 1st. Start the secondary school year on August 31st. And we are also recommending extending winter break by one day, beginning break on Friday, December 23rd. In exchange, we will extend the school year by one day and move the last day of school from Tuesday, June 6th to Wednesday, June 7th. Again, I recommend that you approve the 2022, '23 calendar changes I've just summarized and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
With that, again, before we move into questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion in a second. This is an action item this evening.
Is it moved?
Second.
Motion by Mike and a second by Joel. Are there questions or comments from the audience? Questions, comments from board members? Looks good. All right, with that, we've got a motion by Mike and a second by Joel to accept the calendar changes for the 2022, '23 school year. All in favor of that indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you, that passes on a 7-0 vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this point, believe it or not, we're done with our agenda. We'll turn it over to the superintendent for updates and then we'll go back to board updates.
Okay, thank you. First, I want to remind parents that January 5th is the deadline to apply for enrollment in one of our five elementary magnet schools for next year and the deadline to apply for enrollment at Valley Middle School of STEM is February 9th. For more information and to apply for enrollment, go to district196.org/magnetschools. I also want to make another pitch to all District 196 parents and guardians, employees, and high school students to please take a short survey on the district website at district196.org/dde. Your input on the short survey will help define the desired daily experience in our district as a parent or guardian, employee, and most importantly, for our students. The survey will remain open through December 23rd. So please, please, please take this opportunity to share your thoughts with us. And lastly, and importantly, I want to publicly thank Mike Rosine and Craig Ingramson. Mike, you've been a steady voice of support for the students, families, and employees of District 196 for more than three decades. When my kids were in school, you were here and here you are now. And it's been an honor to serve with you. You've been a leader during tough times and you've always been willing to listen and to learn. Thank you for your service to District 196. And Craig, I appreciate the energy and excitement you've brought, especially when we visit schools on Fridays. During your term, you were part of a board that called for bolder loving referendum request in 2019, which puts our district in a stronger financial position to weather these difficult times. Thank you for your service to District 196.
And on behalf of the board, I would like to start by recognizing both Mike Rosine and Craig Ingramson for their service on their board. Their term expires, as you know, in January and this is their last regular school board meeting. Mike was first elected to the board in 1989. That was the same year Dakota Hills Middle opened and a year before Eagan High School opened. Mike has served as a member of the district school board for amazing 32 years. During tough times, tougher times, and toughest times, especially these last two years with COVID. During his time on the board, the district enrollment has grown from 17,000 to 30,000 students and the district has opened 16 new schools. It has been my pleasure to work with you for those 32 years, your friend, and we will miss you. And on behalf of the board, oh, we better give you yours.
We've been side by side for those 32 years, we were elected at the same time.
We were elected at the same time and through tough and tougher times. We always joke with Mike, when he first got elected to the board, all he wanted, he said, all he wanted to have is air conditioning at Southview.
I think we've had a replacement a couple of times.
Thank you so much for your service to District 196.
Thank you, Jackie, it's been a pleasure.
Craig is completing his term on the board after be elected, after being elected in 2017. Craig has been very involved and an engaged member of the board for all four years of his term. He's a strong supporter of public education for the career education. He is a great proponent of families and students and making sure that everybody is heard. Craig, we will miss you. You've been a joy to work with. And as Craig said, oh, no, no, no. As Craig said the other day, I'm not going anywhere, so congratulations, thank you very much. Congratulations to both of you. Congratulations and thank you for the work that you've done on behalf of the students, families, and staff in this district.
I recognize a couple of people. Hey, when I first came on, Margaret Coleman was on this board and she sure helped me out a lot and I know she helped you out a lot too. And her friendship and caring are long remembered and I appreciate what she did. Callie and Julie Barnes, boy, you guys saved me a whole bunch of times. I appreciate you dragging me into the technology era.
Says the man with the stack of papers.
I'm still not willing to go all the way there, but you're, you're a good person and I thank you very much. Thank you very much. Back a few years ago, we had a situation developed in the district and we needed to replace a superintendent. I was board chair at that time and the first person I went to for help was John Curry. And in my opinion, there's no nicer or effective leader that we've ever had. He was that quiet giant that did everything that he needed to do and led this district through a very difficult time. And John, wherever you are, and I hope you're okay, thank you very much. And Cal Zefal, some of the, we've been going through boundary changes and things here tonight. He must have done 100 of them. When you say we went from 17,000 or whatever it was, the students, every year we were opening a elementary school and, and doing boundary changes and that man worked tirelessly to make sure those things went good and to help the families in the district to be able to absorb those changes. Besides that, he was one of the best beer drinking buddies I ever had. He, he was good. I'm a lucky man. I've had two 30-plus year careers in my life, one as a police officer and then this one. And to enjoy doing something that long is, is remarkable. I thank an awful lot of people, including the residents of this district, for supporting us and making this job a whole lot easy. Keep up the good work here, folks.
Mr. Ingram.
The last four years has been very rewarding. I've put a lot of time into this district, but I've gotten so much out of it. And I have one ask for the people of our district. It's been pretty crazy last couple of years. Let's unite ourselves, let's put, let's take the higher road and let's do what's best for our kids. This isn't a political position, this is a nonpartisan school board. We should all just care about our kids. Let's do the right thing and make sure that they get educated to their full potential. Thank you.
Amen. And with those lovely thoughts, I will move that the meeting adjourns. Is there a second? We've got a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. We are adjourned, good evening.